Call the meeting to order. Roll call. Vice Mayor Cruz.
Here.
Councilmember Malston.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Mayor Huer. Here. Silent prayer followed by a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Replay statement. This meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, October 19th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, October 20th at 9:00 a.m. The city council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch. Agenda approval additions and/or deletions?
I'd like to pull item, consent item six.
Capital improvements, capital improvement program status update?
Just have a quick question, that's all.
Okay. Any further? Okay, presentations. Introduction of new employee Randy Watkins, Water Systems Supervisor, Public Works Department.
Well, Madam Mayor and council members, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Randy Watkins here to my left. Go ahead, step on up. He's the newest addition to our management team. He's, when Mr. Biznet was promoted to our utilities manager position, that left a huge void and big shoes to fill in our water division. And Mr. Watkins has stepped up to be that new water system supervisor. By way of background, he has over 10 years of experience in processing and disposal of hazardous wastewater. In addition to wastewater treatment and water treatment, as well as distribution of potable drinking water and sewage collection systems. He comes to us holding a grade three water treatment operator and a grade three water distribution certificates, as well as a grade two wastewater treatment operator license in hand. So he's multi-talented and he also is nearing completion, is working on getting just his hours in place for his grade water, grade four water distribution certificate. So we're very pleased to have that acumen coming onboard. He's previously worked with Department of Corrections at DVI and Tracy, I believe, and working on their water treatment systems there. And Western Hills Water District, City of San Bernardino Municipal Water Department, City of Loma Linda Department of Public Works, in their water distribution and water production divisions. So he has a degree in water supply technology from San Bernardino Valley College. And he focused his studies in municipal water and wastewater treatment. A birdie has told me that he has a career goal of becoming a civil environmental engineer. So he has high aspirations in water treatment and wastewater treatment plants. And in all that spare time, I'm sure he has left, he enjoys gourmet cooking and spending time with his family. So we're thrilled to have Mr. Randy Watkins coming onboard. And Randy, anything you'd like to say?
I would like to thank the beautiful community of Galt for welcoming me into your team. Like you said, I know I have big shoes to fill. Mr. Biznet set the bar pretty high. And as a community, we're growing, the water department is growing. And thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis isn't here yet, is he?
Yeah, can we put that?
Yeah, well, go ahead, when he comes.
Thank you.
Okay. Introduction of new K-9 Officer Kane. Hi Kane.
So I told Officer Little that following this, it's been our tradition that the new employees have to come and give a speech afterwards. So I'm sure he's got to be a little prepared. So I thought it was important that we talk a little bit about Officer Little, why he was selected as our newest dog handler. And then we'll talk about our new K-9 Kane. Officer Little has been with our department for about five years. He worked as a volunteer while attending the police academy before he transitioned to becoming an officer here. He's previously worked on patrol and the pop team and on regional pop efforts. And he has a strong connection with our community and he's constantly out there working and everything, which made it a really easy decision to make him our newest K-9 handler when he applied. So let's talk about our new dog. His name is Kane. He's a one and a half year old German Shepherd from the Czech Republic. He was chosen in August. And right after he was chosen, Officer Little and Kane went to training. The interesting thing that was continually stated is that he excelled through training and he's just a natural, this dog. So he moved through training really, really quick, handling things that usually take dogs about a year to handle through the different searches and the different environments that they go through. So now he's certified on patrol and he's also a certified narcotics. And he loves, one of the quotes is here, is he loves working and is the main attraction at the Pink Patch Project today at the state Capitol, which about 150 law enforcement agencies all merged at the Capitol today to show off our pink patches. And Officer Kane was one of the people with the pink patches today. So anyway, so that's Officer Little and our new K-9 Kane, and I can't wait to hear this speech.
This has been my career goal since I decided to become in law enforcement. So it's kind of a, you know, five years in, it's, I'm very blessed to have that. Kane's been an awesome addition, not only to my family, but to the department. He loves finding new pets up and down each room that he goes in, down in the office. And then today, he got lots of it. He's been sleeping ever since we got home, so that's why Little wound up right now. I know he wants to say a couple of words, so don't get scared. So thank you guys.
Okay, that stock presentation, Eric Lewis.
I'm gonna have Jackie Garcia, our special events manager, come up first.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight, I would like to introduce promoter Eric Lewis from Vet Track Project, who will be providing a brief overview of the Vets dot concert held on September 15th at Veterans Field. Also, around March of 2019, Parks and Rec will be providing a detailed summary to council in the special event sponsorship funding report based on this event.
Welcome, Eric.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good to see you.
I saw you rocking out. I'm sorry I didn't get to say hi to you. I saw pictures after and I was like, oh, the mayor was there. This year, our event, first and foremost, thank you to the city of Galt. It was amazing. The field was so spacious and allowed for people to relax and had plenty of room. Parks and Rec, top notch. Whatever I needed, they were there, I mean overly there in front of us. I mean, whatever we needed, if we coughed, you know, they were like giving us napkins, that type of stuff. But we saved three lives. That's always awesome. I mean, I want to save more, but it's one of those double edged swords. I hope too many veterans aren't trying to kill themselves. But if we hear that, you know, people came up to us like, thank you guys, this event was exactly what we needed. And we're like, you know, we appreciate it, but you know, the city of Galt helped us. So we've already submitted our package for next year. We hope we can do it again, hope we get it approved. But I know a couple of comments where people wish we had a better turnout. And every year that we do this, we figure out some of our failures. And one of the biggest failure was advertising, which we've already addressed that. And we've got teams of, we've got local consultants here in the city of Galt that want to jump onboard with us and help us do a marketing campaign. Additionally, we noticed after we wrapped up, I guess we had a problem with vagrants. Because my volunteer committee, we made sure we cleaned up the entire place. And then I was notified by Jackie that trash was just everywhere. And they spent, what was it, two, three hours cleaning up? Two to three hours cleaning up. And I don't know what kind of policing that we can do after events like that. Because again, my committee, we had everything wrapped up, there was no trash anywhere. The only complaint that we had was it wasn't two days. And I was like, that two days would have been enough, you know? But I do have something to present. This is what we gave to all of our sponsors that were the big ones. So this was signed by Flaw, which is one of the military law enforcement big supporters. So we wanted to do that to you guys. I would assume it's not your cup of tea, but I have five CDs. And those are, the CD, one of the important parts about the music is, music is therapy. You don't have to be a veteran to have therapy with music because it's a universal language. It speaks to all of us, whether it's country, rap, rock, Tejano, any style of music. One of the songs on there is by the national recording artist Flaw. It's called Only the Strong Survive. And all the bands that were on there donated their track. And nine of them were produced by us Vet Tracks Project. So again, we're just, I don't have the words to say how pleased we were with the support from the city of Galt. Because again, there's no other place that I'd rather have it because I love the city of Galt. And it's like, it's our little nest egg. I mean, when you hear like something bad happening, I get offended, like, oh, why are people doing this? You know, but again, it's amazing and thank you guys. I know I saw, Tom, I saw you there, I saw you there, of course. But again, from the bottom of my heart, we would not have been able to do it without all of you, so I'm...
Well, Eric, thank you for what you do. Because don't ever think it's just three lives. Because one life impacts so many people. It's immeasurable. You know, I spent 40 years in mental health. One life is blessed. So thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment? Under Government Code Section 54954.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments. Except for brief responses to questions, no discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Speaker cards are located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers. Once completed, forward the speaker card to the clerk. Those persons wishing to speak on any items scheduled on the calendar, on the agenda, will be given an opportunity to do so at the time the item is being considered. Reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees. And Chief Stockman, you attend the criminal justice committee meeting?
I do normally, but I did not attend this week.
You did not this time? Okay, thank you. Kurt?
I attended the fire battalion chief, it was their CSD meeting and board meeting. They were so excited to have it in this facility, doesn't happen very often. Donna, how often is it?
Twice a year, they have it scheduled.
Twice a year. Complimented us on how wonderful our facility is, they were very impressed. So that was, that was good. And then Liberty Ranch had their first home And then Liberty Ranch had their first homecoming in their home stadium, so that was exciting. A lot of the town, it was packed, so a lot of the town was out there.
Tom?
On candidate forums, I attended my fifth year high school reunion. That's it.
Mark?
None, thank you.
And I haven't attended any regional committees this last two weeks either. Okay, so we have an information consent calendar. We have a public comment. Julie Clark, regarding item four, F4.
Good evening, council and citizens of Galt. I understand that this is not, well, it pertains to this information consent calendar item, but it's more just about the topic of the elimination of the EBT system at the Galt market. And I'd like to start by just reading a little page from the USDA letter to different agencies regarding the SNAP program. Supporting local food systems and expanding access to healthy foods for low income families remains a high priority for FNS. We commend states for their continued efforts in this area and are committed to assisting state agencies in meeting the shared goal of successfully serving those in need of food assistance through access to healthy food choices. So I was curious when I heard, I unfortunately wasn't able to attend the Parks and Rec meeting where this was discussed, and I heard about it after the fact. So I had done a little research on my own and I was a little confused as to why we were paying a company to provide this service when the equipment itself is free, provided free to markets that wish to use this system. So another quote from this, right now that assistance is coming through the USDA but is also supported by Department of Social Services CalFresh Branch. So let's see, note, and this is also an additional note here, states provide, states that provide such EBT equipment to farmers markets receive reimbursement for allowable administrative expenses at the normal 50% rate. So we have the administrative cost being somewhat reimbursed. We have free equipment. And so I contacted the farmers market specialist at the California Department of Social Services. And what she said is essentially that the Alchemist program is there to assist farmers markets in using the software, actually having staffing, but it's a nonprofit organization. It's not intended to be a permanent solution. But those type of tasks can be carried out by just average, you know, employee making minimum wage. So a couple of points I just wanted to mention is that I understand we've already ended the contract with Alchemist, which, you know, that's all said and done. So that's neither here nor there. The point is that going forward, I think that it's an important thing to pursue all options in beginning the program again. According to the woman that I spoke with today, there is an upcoming WIC aspect to this that in 2020 is going to be, you're going to be able to use WIC to purchase things at these EBT at the markets as well. And not to mention the, the side note at the end of the letter that's in tonight's packet, agenda packet, which says that seems to conclude that there, let's see, eliminating this current program will not reduce customers, the market, et cetera, et cetera. So it's interesting to me that we're saying it's not going to reduce the number of customers. However, there are other agencies or entities, farmers markets and various places that offer things like market match where a certain amount of money is matched, you know, by half, which increases people's buying power. So that certainly would be a draw to a family that has to support, you know, people on a very limited income budget. So thinking more long range, the impact on local families who will no longer be able to use this to purchase fresh fruits and vegetables, and I don't know about you, but go to a standard market and, okay, I go to Trader Joe's, I'm not gonna lie, and it's a dollar for an apple. So, you know, any other standard market, you're going to have to pay a lot more for produce that you could get much more inexpensively locally. And then the impact on local farmers and just impact on overall market sales. So I'm just curious where the data is that supports this conclusion that eliminating this will not impact the customer base or future revenue. So that's, that's pretty much my questions. And then I also have some data here about, from the USDA regarding the authorized farmers markets and how many have, what the increase has been over time. So they started doing this program in 2012. Since that time, it went from 262 markets that started off to almost 600 markets statewide, which is a 128% increase. And so going forward, I think it's going to be a very important thing that we try to reestablish this offering to customers and to help our local families and farmers and help people eat healthy and live longer and cost less in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you. Ramondo, is it possible to get that data to her at a later time?
What data is she asking for?
Ms. Clark, what, what data?
Data regarding, what, what data was used to form the conclusion that staff has come to according to this document for tonight's meeting that says eliminating this service will not impact, excuse me, will not reduce customers.
There is no written data. It's my 30 years' experience in the flea market field.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, information consent calendar, minutes of the regular meeting of October 2nd. File and, receive and file warrants for a period ending October 3rd. Authorized city manager to execute an agreement with Adaptive Insights, Inc. for budget software subscription services. Electronic benefit transfer rate adjustment to Galt Market Produce Row vendors. Galt Arno Cemetery District equipment requests for Dia de los Muertos event. Capital Improvement Project status, oh no, we pulled that item, correct?
Correct.
Pulled that item. Treasurer's report for period ending August 2018. Do I have a motion?
I'll second.
I have a motion by council member Campion, second by council member Molsen. Call for the vote. Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Council member Molsen?
Aye.
Council member Campion?
Aye.
Council member Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Huwer? Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote. Capital Improvement Program Status Update, July 1st to September 30th, 2018. Tom?
Yeah, my quick question. I'm reading over this, kind of jumped out at me. We're planning an online portal for our water meter readings for our customers so they can actually look at it themselves, real time?
That's correct, and that was envisioned over two years ago when we began the project. And that was part of the original contract, was to provide those services to the city.
Okay, and it's, it's still sort of on track. It's my understanding they're kind of in the validation stage right now, which, having gone through some of that in the software development, I understand it could be rocky.
They have had some challenges with programming and importing data and making sure that the billing system is properly talking to the, the water data set that is collected by a third party and then that that all is coming together with the information that's in the billings. We are danger close.
Danger.
Use a term of art. Finally, having that beta testing phase completed, we're doing some final data checking and hope to do a soft launch within the next month or two, certainly by the end of the year. Soft launch would be, we would, we would put it on our website with instructions and encourage folks to try it out. And if that all seems to be working, for those that are able to do that, then we would do sort of a hard launch and put a notice out to all 5,000 of our residential customers as to that opportunity. And it certainly is also going to be available to our commercial customers.
And at some point, I imagine at that time, we'll probably have a presentation where you can actually walk us through it?
I'm sure that could be arranged.
Yeah. Okay, that was my only question. I don't think the public really, probably up to this point, even had a clue that we were going that route. So eventually that this would happen. Eventually, they'll be able to go online and see how much water they're using.
And they can just highlight a few of the things that we'll be rolling out is, not only will they be able to go in and look at real time usage rather than waiting two months for a bill that might be a surprise, they can actually go in and see what they used in the last week, the last month, or the last two month billing cycle. They'll also have up to a year's worth of history so they can kind of compare how we're doing this May with how we did the previous May, a little bit like your, your energy bills will often have that comparator. And they'll have the ability to also set alerts if they want to set a, when they reach a certain amount of water usage. And a great functionality that we are, will be making available is the ability to request leak detection alerts where if your meter senses continuous usage for a period of 24 or 48 hours, then there's an indication there could be a leak or something's running. And you can actually have the system send you an email to that effect. So you can check on that without waiting two months to find out.
I got one of those from my mother's house in Sacramento. Yeah, okay. It's good to have. That was my only question. With that, I'll, I'll move to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by council member Molsen, second by vice mayor Cruz. Call for the vote. Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Council member Molsen?
Aye.
Council member Campion?
Aye.
Council member Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Huwer? Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote. Schedule matters. Subject, South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. Mr. Arias.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm pleased and it's my pleasure tonight to present to you the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. You'll hear me refer to it as either the SS HCP or HCP, but it's all the same thing. The SS HCP had its roots in the mid 1990s, so this is a great success story to finally have this item to you tonight. We'll be asking the council tonight to conduct a public hearing, adopt a resolution certifying the environmental impact report and the federal environmental impact statement, also which adopts the SEQA findings of fact, formally adopting the SS HCP and the Aquatic Resource Plan and the Nexus Study. We'll also ask the council to introduce and waive the first reading on the aquatic protection ordinance and the mitigation fee ordinance, as well as then adopting the implementing ordinance. The HCP is a regional effort that will provide development and infrastructure projects with a streamlined, predictable, federal and state permitting process while creating a preserve system to protect habitat, open space, and agriculture lands. An approved HCP allows project proponents within the plan area to simplify and expedite the state and federal endangered species permitting process. The SS HCP provides a more effective process for protecting natural resources as compared to the current method of a project by project basis. The project by project mitigation often results in small, isolated preserves rather than an interconnected set of preserves. Also, the HCP, in addition to the interconnected preserves, will sustain them in perpetuity and it'll ensure an adequately funded management program for the preserves. Other agencies participating in the plan include Sacramento County, the city of Rancho Cordova, the Sacramento Regional County Sanitation District, Sacramento County Water Agency, and the Capital Southeast Connector, JPA. The plan area encompasses 317,656 acres in the southern portion of Sacramento County, including portions of unincorporated Sacramento County, the city of Galt, and the southern half of Rancho Cordova. The plan also includes about 35,000 acres of planned preserves within that plan area. And this plan area is defined as the area in which all conservation actions will be implemented and where all incidental take will occur. The HCP will allow plan permittees to receive an incidental take permit for activities and projects they conduct. Incidental take is generally defined as direct or indirect harm to a species, including habitat loss, which is incidental to land development or public infrastructure projects. The HCP will build upon existing preserves in the plan area, and this is a good, this is a good map to view. You can see the existing preserves shown in the green area, and there are some larger preserves in it, but you also see some smaller preserves, which, you know, part of the plan will look to eliminate or at least reduce. You could also see a pretty significant green belt between city of Galt and Elk Grove. And also, I think what this map shows is that the urban development area most affected, and actually the lands that are most affected are within Sacramento County. So Sacramento County has done the heavy lifting in the creation of the SS HCP, considering that they're impacted the most. They were the lead agency certifying the environmental documents. The EIS and the EIR concluded that the project as submitted was the superior alternative, and there were no significant unavoidable impacts. There are no mitigation measures identified as a result of this program. And as you would imagine, there's expected benefits to biological and aquatic resources. The program has certain components, and one is the aquatic resources program. The permit strategy of the program will provide protection priority to save, again, larger aquatic systems and not isolated wetlands. The program streamlines the permitting process consistent with the Clean Water Act, Section 404 permits and 401 certifications. And the purpose of the protection ordinance is to establish a locally implemented permit process to administer requirements in the aquatic resources program. It includes procedures for review of applications for HCP covered activities. The intent is to achieve a no net loss of aquatic resource function and services. The implementing agreement specifies the responsibilities of each party and how the plan permittees will ensure that the HCP conservation strategy will be implemented. It also identifies how reporting and enforcement procedures will be carried out by the local agencies. It also ensures that all parties understand the responsibilities within the SS HCP. The mitigation fee ordinance provides the mechanism for the collection and disbursement of the HCP mitigation fees. The fees were derived from the Project Nexus Study, which was consistent with the Mitigation Fee Act. It should be noted that the amount of the mitigation fee will be established separately by resolution, and that will have to be approved separately and also approved by the South Sacramento Conservation Agency. And that group is scheduled to meet in a couple of weeks. This slide shows the history of the HCP, at least as it pertains to Galt. And a couple of key dates are when the city actually approved our participation in the HCP. Also, the city council approved the joint powers authority setting up the South Sacramento Conservation Agency. And earlier this year, the planning commission recommended that the city council approve the plan. And of course, the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors approved the HCP last month. And Rancho Cordova had this item presented to the city council last night, and they approved it unanimously. The city of Galt benefits greatly by participating in the program. It will help streamline development and infrastructure projects, and it creates a stronger preserve system, and it's consistent with the city's general plan. We actually have a general plan policy, LU-1.10, which specifically states that the city shall work with Sacramento County on the creation of the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan. We also have another policy, LU-9.1, which states that the city should start looking at ways to create open space, agricultural buffers, and conservation easements, basically between the city of Elk Grove and our northern urban boundary. Before I conclude the presentation, I'd really like to thank Sacramento County for their efforts on this. Again, they've done all the heavy lifting. You know, we're grateful to be a part of it. And in particular, LeAnn Moffett and Kim Hudson have been great help to staff. And then also, the HCP consultant, Bill Zebraugh, has been of great assistance. And I think some of you have kind of touched bases with him over the last couple of days. I'd also like to thank Elizabeth Sparkman with Rancho Cordova, and then Galt staff Kristen Bits and Armin Lobo for helping put this package to you together tonight. And although Rich Rodmacher is no longer with Sacramento County, he certainly deserves recognition for the work he put in and getting this project to this point. So he's no longer with the county, but he's probably the, the person that did the most amount of work to get this project to you today. So as a reminder, we're asking the council tonight to adopt a resolution certifying the EIR and the EIS, adopting the SEQA findings of fact, formally adopting the SS HCP and the Aquatic Resources Plan, as well as the Nexus Study. And then asking you to introduce and waive the first reading of the aquatic protection ordinance and the mitigation fee ordinance. And then also adopting the implementing resolution. And so that concludes staff presentation. Staff and Stack County staff will be available to help answer any questions you might have.
I guess I'll start off. For the benefit of our audience, what's the process now for a developer to come to town and have to mitigate something based on his EIR?
So the current process is developers are required to go So the current process is developers are required to go and locate either an existing mitigation bank and purchase credits, or if they can't find one, then they're required to create one. And so that can be a cumbersome process.
Yes, it can.
It takes time, and it can be costly. So, you know, as mentioned, you know, the goal of this program will be to help streamline that.
Correct.
So instead of that current process, they will essentially be going in and paying a fee.
And they can still use the old process if they wanted to?
Well, there is a mechanism for donation of land.
Correct, correct, yeah.
As long as it is appropriate with HCP.
Right.
Requirements.
So essentially, yeah, they can, yeah, they do have options, okay. Hope it's a little clearer for our audience what we're trying to accomplish here. It's a long time coming. I think it's great for the city, and it's streamlining the process for it.
And not just for development. I think sometimes the overlooked component is, for larger public works projects, they will often have mitigation requirements too.
That's true.
So it's been a struggle in the past for public works to go out and search and find these, and we've had to create our own programs in the past, and we have an existing preserve because of that. So this will also help infrastructure projects as well.
Thank you.
Questions? Mark?
No, I just, you've already answered my question. Basically, what it's doing is, instead of having the developer go out and look for the funds and look for the money, excuse me, look for the land for mitigating purposes, that bank is going to be created, not just for ourselves, but all that are involved.
That's correct.
Any questions?
No, I was just going to make a comment. I mean, you know, I worked on this project, you know, 10, 12 years ago, and I am just very pleased to see that it's actually come to a reality because of the benefits it does provide to the development community, as well as public agencies, including the City of Galt. I mean, it is something that will expedite projects, both public and private, because you are not having to find lands to mitigate whatever potential impact you have. And it's not only finding the land to mitigate it, then it has to meet the criteria of the permitting agency. It's instance Hawk.
Yeah.
You've got to be within a certain number of miles of where the impact occurs.
Got to be correct.
If you find something outside that cone or circle, it doesn't do any good. So, I mean, this is something that I think will really, in the long term, benefit not only the City of Galt, but Sacramento County and any of the participating jurisdictions.
And I think that's a good point, where my experience the last few years has been that land is getting harder and harder to find within that distance.
Yes, it is.
So it could get to a point where we make it even more difficult for development and public works projects.
Yes. And then it's finding, you know, willing property owners to work with the easements, or you have to outright purchase it. And outright purchases are sometimes significantly higher cost than purchasing an easement. So, I mean, it uncomplicates a very complicated process the way it currently is.
Well, I just thought that it was great when I attended the county presentation with Chris, and I just think it's great to see all segments of groups that are concerned about development and concerned about land usage come together and be able to all support this plan. So I think that happens so rarely, it seems like, in government, that everybody can come together and agree on it.
So I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any public comment? Close the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to adopt each one of these separately, so I need a motion for each one of the items unless we have further discussion.
I would make a motion.
And make a, we have to make a motion on each separate item.
That's correct, yep.
And make a motion to adopt the resolution certifying the environmental statement, impact report, adopting the Environmental Quality Act, findings of fact, adopting the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan, and adopting the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan NEXIS study.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Okay.
I have a motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Vice Mayor Cruz. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huer.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote.
Make a motion to introduce and waive the first reading and read only by title, an ordinance adopting Chapter 15.3, Sections 15.3.010 through Section 15.3.110, to Title 15 of the Galt Municipal Code regarding aquatic resource protection.
I have a motion.
A second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Malsen. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huer.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote.
Make a motion to adopt resolution. Just going to keep rolling. Requirements for implementation of the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Malsen. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huer.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote.
Make a motion to introduce and waive the first reading and read by title only, an ordinance adopting Chapter 1532, Sections 1532.0.10 through 1532100, to Title 15 of the Galt Municipal Code regarding establishment of mitigation fees for the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Lamson. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huer.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote. And thank you so much for coming down today.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you so much, and thank you for all of the time and the work, and we're really looking forward to it.
Thank you. It's great.
Okay, regular calendar. Parks and Rec Department, subject: Galt Senior Resource Center.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Armando Saliz, Parks and Rec Director. On July 28th, the Commission on Aging voted to approach the city and city council on establishing a senior resource center. You can see their proposal in the staff report as an attachment. Mayor Huer, city manager, and myself met with Chairman Bob Belay and Commissioner Alvin Roberts to get a better understanding of what their needs truly were. At that meeting, after that meeting, I took Bob and Alvin to the Shabola Center to show them a couple of options of where they could house this resource center. And the final decision that they had selected was the southeast corner of the Shabola Center. As you walk in through the doors, you have the storage rooms on both sides. They want the one closest to the Parks and Rec Department. There are some items in there now. There's storage for Meals on Wheels, and the city has some items in there. There are some cabinets that need to be removed, and a fresh coat of paint will need to be done to that area to make that an office. In the request, they asked for a desk, chairs, computer, and brochure holders, which the city currently has in surplus, so we can bring that over. Hard costs to turn that into an office would be paint, cordless phone, signage, printer, and office supplies totaling about $1,000. Soft costs would be the demolition of the cabinets, painting and moving the surplus office furniture, equalling about $600 in soft costs. With that said, staff is recommending that council review the request by the Commission on Aging regarding the creation of a Galt Senior Resource Center and provide direction to staff. Chairman Belay is in the audience, and Commissioner Roberts is also there. I'd answer any questions if you have any now, or allow Mr. Belay to talk.
It's my understanding this is well within their existing budget, right?
No, we would need $1,000 to paint, remove, and buy a printer and those type of things.
My intention is, if this is approved by the council tonight, at the next meeting, I will allocate my discretionary funds to this project.
You like to talk you into it?
Anyway, I just wanted to, this kind of came about because I met with the Commission on Aging, and we had a speaker come from the senior center in Elk Grove. And one of the things after listening to her speak was I realized that one of the things that, when she talked about, one of the things that they utilize at the senior center in Elk Grove was that we didn't really have a resource center. And she really talked a lot about, the director there talked a lot about, the part the resource center played to seniors in their community and families of seniors to be able to direct people to resources in the community, or in the county, or even within the state. And so I worked with the, I suggested to the commissioners and kind of been working with the chair regarding the fact of being able to establish this. I really appreciate Parks and Rec putting the time in, because I think it's something that could really benefit seniors and their families in our community of having a place to go, whether it's the death of a loved one, whether it's, you know, we were talking, whether it's, you know, dealing with a parent as they're aging, lots of resources. And there's resources out there, and sometimes, I think, because we're so isolated, on our little island from the county, that it's hard to get the resources down here. So they were really proposing to man it with volunteers and to be able to see if we can provide that services to seniors in our community.
And I think this is a great location, that we hold the Meals on Wheels program, the senior club, special interest classes for the seniors, so I think it's a good location for it.
I appreciate that, Armando. Mr. Belay, would you like to say something?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Mayor Huer and council members, thank you very much for listening to our proposal. I was going to start out by saying, we have a dream, but I'm not nearly that great of a person to make that kind of a speech. So I'll limit myself to repeating what the mission of this particular resource center would be. And that is to be avail, this resource center is to be available to members of the senior population of the City of Galt, either in person, by email, or by phone, to answer questions or provide information about the various resources available within our city or nearby cities such as Elk Grove or Lodi that are specific to seniors. The hours of operation we envision, the commission envisions is Monday through Friday, through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., staffing that office once it's opening up. And we anticipate that to open up, hopefully, with your support. You know, children and seniors kind of pull at our heartstrings. Most of us, if not all of us, have kids. Most of us, well, all of us have parents. Some of them are still alive, hopefully, and others are not. But in any case, it pulls at our heartstrings. So when I have a meeting with seniors in my immediate community at Three Palms Mobile Estates, I brought up the issue of the 2-1-1 Center, for example, in Sacramento, South Sacramento. I've been visiting there, been working with them over the last several months. And I asked my fellow, my neighbors, I go, how many of you know what the 2-1-1 Center does? Or have you even heard of it? Not one hand went up, and I think Mayor Huer can attest to that. So that tells me that we have some work to do to let our seniors know what's available. And while we can't open up another senior center like they have in Elk Grove, it started out in the garage. Okay, our senior center starts out in an office that is now actually used to store things, it's a storage room. So that could be a garage. And it could develop into our own senior center so that our seniors in this community, and we have many seniors in our community, don't have to go off to Elk Grove or to Lodi to avail themselves of services. So we could start out small, as Mayor Huer so rightfully suggested when she met with our commission a few months back. And I really, really want to take this opportunity to thank you, Mayor Huer, for your interest. Also, Eugene Palazzo, I thank you for your part in this. And above all, certainly not last, would be your input, Director Solis. So hopefully, this dream that our commission has will come to fruition, at least in terms of having an office where people can go, elderly people can go, get information, and plan their futures in the City of Galt. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. So, Mr. Belay, one of the questions I had you answered about when you're going to be open, are you staffing it with volunteers?
Yes, we intend to staff it with volunteers. We have someone on the commission, Penny Niemeyer, that has already volunteered to train the volunteers. And the way we would like to go about getting volunteers is by advertising through the news.
Newsletter.
Newsletter that goes throughout the city. And thank you, Ms. Saddles, for your cooperation in this as well, because we, once we go out, we should have, we don't really need many people, because, I mean, I'm retired. And depending on what happens on the 6th of November, I may have lots more time, or not, to invest some of my time in staffing that office as well. And I can count on some of my fellow commissioners to do the same, so we, but we are asking for volunteers. And the volunteers, regardless of age, of course, they have to be, you know, adults, obviously, but they don't have to be old. They, you know, they can be young. And they can be young in their minds, or they can just be young, period. Or they can be old, whatever. Anyway, so that's how we're going to get our volunteers.
That's wonderful, very exciting.
Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Again, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Roberts, do you have anything to add?
Nope.
Nope, okay. So, Armando, this is startup cost. Now, we would probably have to come back next year and look at ongoing costs, because there probably, there will be some ongoing costs for paper and those kinds of things probably in the future, if it's.
We were hoping that those minimal costs could be absorbed in the current budget that the Commission on Aging has. What, the startup costs will be what they are, you're talking paper, toner, so.
And I know when we met, we discussed even, and the commission, the commissioners talked about looking at getting donations from the community, that there are a lot of community members and community organizations that do work to support seniors, and that we might be able to get some donations in the future to help with some of the ongoing costs. Okay, any further questions? So we just need to give direction to staff?
Please.
So do we have any direction? Any concerns?
Well, I think some of the direction can be that staff return, then, with the, with Mayor Huer's, as I understood that you would want to bring back, the next meeting, the use of your discretionary funds towards the senior center, and any budget adjustment that might be necessary to the Commission on Aging's budget based on those proposed improvements listed in the staff report.
So moved. Do we have a second?
A second.
Moved by Mayor Huer, second by Councilmember Malsen. Call for the vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Huer.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote. Thank you. Public Works Department, approval of the final map and subdivision improvement agreement for River Oaks 3C.
Madam Mayor and council members, Mr. Bill Forrest will make a brief presentation. We are recommending tonight that we do reach the final step with the River Oaks subdivision and approve subdivision agreement and their final map for Phase 3 fee, Phase 3C. Mr. Forrest.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, Mayor Huer and council members. I'm Bill Forrest, Senior Civil Engineer with the Public Works Department. There we go. River Oaks 3 was originally approved in 2004. The 2004 approval included splitting the project into three phases. River Oaks 3C is the third and final phase of the development. Construction on River Oaks 3C began in June of 2018. Starting in late June, when they obtained the core permit, they jumped over and closed and worked on Marengo Road and reopened it soon after. We particularly wanted them to do the work, that work during summer vacation for schools. And with strong effort on behalf of Elliott Homes and the contractors and the City of Galt, that goal was nearly achieved. We were like two days late. This is River Oaks 3C. Approximately, this was the middle phase, the second phase, 3B, and 3A, which was one of the first projects, acceptance of that project was one of and 3A, which was one of the first projects, acceptance of that project was one of the first projects I worked on when I first came to the city. So what you have is extension of Ripken Avenue, Sepeda Way, Demagio Way, and a couple other, I refer to this as the baseball subdivision, in that majority of the street names are named after famous baseball players. Improvements done to date, in 2017, the city planning commissioner approved a map amendment which changed the bridge across, I refer to as Dead Men's Gulch Tributary, over, this was Norbury Way in the existing River Oaks 2B development, and processed a map amendment to change that from a vehicular bridge to a pedestrian bike bridge. Other improvements, this is the Drainage Tributary itself. This is not particularly exciting. It's your average channel, so to speak, widened and cleaned out. Downstream of the bridge, there's a splitting of the flow, creating upland habitat in the center. And, and that work was done underneath a U.S. Army Corps 404 permit, which they had to obtain their mitigation prior to the, this is showing the improvements along Marengo Road. The sound wall is up. Right now, we have two lanes of vehicular traffic. You can see the curb and gutter has been poured. This is just north of the UPR spur railroad tracks. This is the entrance, Sepeda Way off of Marengo into the project. Didn't take pictures, but interior, the curb and gutter and sidewalk has been poured. The streets have been rocked. By necessity, all the underground utilities, water sewer, storm drainage, the, the dry utilities, smud, all that's been installed. One additional aspects of development is there used to be power poles along Marengo Road, and all that has been underground. All that is left is a pole serving the existing residents who lives on the east side of Marengo Road and north of the railroad tracks. And then there's a smud substation on the west side of Marengo Road. And so there's a pole associated with that. Before you is the subdivision improvement agreement. And in the subdivision improvement agreement, it gives an option, a provision to defer slightly the construction of the UPR crossing improvements, which is a new rail bed, new tracks, new signals. As most people are aware, dealing with the railroad is a long process. I remember meeting with them, I believe it was fall of 2016, to discuss these improvements. So the subdivision improvement agreement gives a option to allow work to progress with the UPR crossing improvements, and then gives an option of deferring pavement of the pedestrian bike trail, which backing up, runs from Marengo Road along the north side of Ripken, on the south side of the Drainage Tributary, and continues all the way across the north side of 3B and 3A, and ties into a trail that was built with a well site in 2005, 2006. So this is the crossing, pedestrian crossing. So right now, the proposal is to pave the bike trail from Kaling Court, where there's a ramp all the way out to Marengo Road, and then the pavement, bike trail up to the pedestrian bike bridge. The, the reason for the deferral is that the Liberty Ranch Eastview Development on the east side of Marengo, their trunk sewer goes along that open space and essentially will be underneath the, that bike trail. And it was hopefully to give them enough time to get the work done. And so Elliott Holmes and their contractor doesn't pave the bike trail, and then we tear it out six months later for development, proposed development on the Eastview side. Give you a little timeframe. The Eastview Development, I believe, was approved in 2015. What I have heard from the engineering group is that they're looking to start masquerading in April of 2019. That is dependent upon them getting a U.S. Army Corps permit for the channel work. The plans for the sewer have, have been designed, but they have not been submitted to the city for review and And then there was a condition in the, conditions of approval that gave a fee credit for the railroad crossing improvements. As the permit, encouragement permit from the railroad is under, we decided to bring, we'll be bringing that before the council at a later date when we had more concrete timeframe. So the recommendation is, one, approve the final map for River Oaks 3C and authorizing the filing and recordation thereof, and then authorize the city manager to execute the subdivision improvement agreement. And I'm available for any questions.
Real quick one. The railroad crossing, that doesn't qualify for a quiet zone, does it? I don't think you have a sight distance.
Also, I think, given the, the frequency of traffic.
Yeah, it's not warranted.
Yeah.
It hasn't been studied or proposed as a quiet zone, but it has very little traffic.
Yeah, very low traffic. And I don't think you have the, the visibility either, on both sides of the track for one, because all the sound walls.
No other time to deal with Union Pacific.
Why, why was there a decision to wait until the 41st permit regarding the bike path?
Elliott Holmes has a kind of a home building phasing schedule and, and working with them, you know, how many permits do they anticipate to build out and whatnot. The 41st was to hopefully get us to that, close to that April 2019 timeframe.
The timing guess.
Yeah. Right now, the home building phasing plan is they're going to start south. That's their first, approximately about 20 units, move to the middle, and then the north will be their last home building phase.
I, if I may.
Go ahead.
I, I had, talked to the city manager today. I had a couple of questions on this particular issue. Because I, I look at it a little differently, and I, and I understand staff's point of view, not wanting to construct a public facility and then six months later, maybe come in and tear it out. It makes it look like the city doesn't, you know, the city's left hand doesn't know what the right hand's doing. I completely get that. The concern I have, though, is that we are putting Elliott Holmes in a position, the residents of the subdivision in a position, and future residents of that subdivision, they're having to wait on the action of a third party that has absolutely no interest in the subdivision. The East Area Project, I don't know that it has met any of the deadlines that have been set forth here recently. I don't really know where they are in the process, other than, you know, you indicate they have plans, but you haven't seen them. So maybe they do, maybe they don't. They still have to get the 404 permit, which can be up to a year easily. So I mean, I, I, I don't think that the residents nor Elliott should be held hostage, in a sense, to finish out these improvements. I mean, it's a bike trail that connects schools, school facilities, as well as the park facilities. That's certainly a benefit to the residents of that subdivision to have that trail completed. It's part of the subdivision improvement agreement. And I think that it should probably go ahead with the understanding that another developer may be responsible for reconstructing it at a future date. But I don't think that the residents of the subdivision nor Elliott should be held up. I think secondly, or thirdly, to postpone the paving, and I defer to Mr. Mr. Walker on this, they're going to have to have, I would believe, mobilization costs associated with bringing in the asphalt, because they're going to pave their streets out first, before they can get building permits. So all that paving is going to be done. Then to mobilize again and bring asphalt back in is going to be an additional cost. And I don't know if that's substantial. I don't, I don't have any idea.
The construction manager for Elliott Holmes is actually working up those numbers and, and will be presenting that to me. But yes, you know, the, the, the paving is expected to be done early November, possibly, you know, depending on weather, all the way into, end of November. And so, yes, they're, they're going to be paving everything at that point in time. And so there is a cost to Elliott Holmes potentially to have George Reed, the contractor, to remobilize, to finish out
Yeah.
the rest of the paving. One thing I should also mention is that the portion of the trail that's to the west of the pedestrian bridge, we are going to have them rock it. And so there'll be a firm surface, not a paved surface, but a, a.
Well, and I understand that. But I mean, even at that, they rock it, then they may have to go back in and do additional subgrade work in order to put down the pavement at a future date. So I think it creates more of a liability on their part, rather than a, it creates a benefit to the subdivision of, to a certain degree. But I guess I, I just don't, we have no promissory commitment by the East Area that they're going to get this done. So therefore, I don't see why the city would hold up improvements that otherwise benefit the subdivision. I, I'd like to hear from Mr. Mr. Walker, too, because I, you know, I don't know what the difference is. I don't know what their, their interest is. But I think.
I share Councilman Campion's concerns, that the existing residents have been waiting for that bike path to connect. We're doing the improvements along Marengo. Kids will be able to use those to go to walk to schools, to walk to the
To parks.
to the parks. Holding it up, waiting for the Eastview project, which we don't know when that's going to come online, and when they're going to do anything out there, to hold that up, for those residents that have already moved into those homes, the ones that are going to be moving in those homes, to be able to not have that amenity that they need. I share your concern, that I think that, you know, depending on what, I mean, I'd like to hear what the applicant has to say, and I.
Well, we'll certainly let the applicant speak. Just a couple of points of clarification. We're not requiring them to defer those improvements. We're giving them the option. In any event, they would have to be paved within the one year, as all improvements must be completed with or without Eastview, certainly within a year. The thought would be to provide a compacted all-weather surface that wouldn't require undo and redo. Certainly, if it is paved early and then is torn up, there will be a loss of use of that bike trail while that work is going on. And so, and last point would just be that if indeed they're going to sort of start improvements at the south and work to the north, the thought is that the bike trail will be in before there's any contiguous development up against that bike trail. There would still be a way through to the bridge, and then they could go north on the bridge. So those are, that was, staff's thought was to provide flexibility. If the two developers could work out an arrangement or a deal or a cost offset, that we'd provide that flexibility within the agreement, but not a requirement that they do that.
Well, I wasn't sure, because the, what it, what it states on the, the written part, it says that defer paving of the trail until the 41st building permit. In here, it says, delay it, it says, "which shall be completed prior to the issuance of." So there was an inconsistency. So I thought maybe there was another change.
Yeah, our, our PowerPoint is more of a summary. The conditions that are in the agreement would apply.
Okay.
And, and it would have to be started prior to the 41st building.
Which could be tomorrow.
Could be tomorrow.
Yeah. And I understand that. So I wasn't going to argue that point, but I didn't, at this point, it, it made it look as though we were going to wait until the 41st, at least on the PowerPoint, the way I read that. Anyway, I, I'd like to hear from Mr.
Walker.
Walker, if anybody else has, doesn't have any questions.
Have you been in communication with the, with the Eastview?
Well, like, as I mentioned, you know, before moving forward with this proposal, frankly, I, I wanted some, some piece of information from, and like I said, I communicated with the engineering group, Wood Rogers, for the Eastview Liberty Ranch development. And I said, you know, the, the developers' applicant said they'd be turning dirt the year after approval, which was two years ago.
Yeah, they haven't met.
So, you know, and, you know, again, not wanting to hold up Elliott Holmes, because, you know, issuance of building permits was tied to the completion of the bike trail. And I was, I was trying to, you know, work out a deal that could be mutually beneficial. But as Steve mentioned, this is just really to give an option. Like I said, you know, they're looking at the costs, and LA Holmes may, you know, know what, you know, same kind of thing. You know, I have no, you know, expectation of, you know, recouping my costs from this development group in the short term. I'm just going to pave it, you know, and, you know, they have to deal with the cost, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Walker?
Unless, unless maybe Elliott would like to put in that sewer main for them and get reimbursed at a later date.
Knew that was coming, right?
Price Walker with Elliott Holmes. First of all, you know, we, we appreciate it and, and share the same concerns you have. There's, there is no benefit to us to defer this. We're going to be paving in about two weeks, and it makes sense, the most sense, both economically and frankly, for the subdivision. The folks to the west are the ones that have been waiting the longest.
Right.
And they're the ones that are going to be deferred. And so, you know, it makes, from our point of view, sense to, to go ahead and just pave it all. We were working with staff to make sure that in the event the folks to our east did come forward, it, you know, wouldn't, the questions wouldn't then be asked at both us and staff, "What the heck are you guys doing? You just paved it, and now it's being torn up."
Right.
And that's, that's really what this came down to. But if it's a pleasure of the council for us to go in and do it all, we will complete it this year, barring, barring weather.
You know, to the extent that you can, and I appreciate what staff was trying to work out. I think it's, and it, and it makes sense. But I don't think, you know, if that can be worked out, if you can work it out with that developer, that's fine. But I don't think it should be at the cost of delaying the improvements to the subdivision that, that I think.
And we've had a lot, not a lot, but we've had several discussions with Wood Rogers, the engineer for the developer. And, you know, they're assuring us that they want to go forward, but wanting to go forward and going forward isn't the same thing. I'm not sure the current developer is going to build that out, or actually looking for someone to, to
To purchase?
to buy it and do it for them.
In other words, it could be years before we
Right.
actually have to.
I, I couldn't give you an answer on that.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Merrick and Ed, just, you know, staff's been working with the Eastview developer on forming CFD. That process is moving along, probably a little slower than, than we would like. But we are, you know, in discussions with them to, to get that, you know, moving forward, probably February, March, before the council would see anything on that.
Mr. Walker, have you reviewed the, the condition 3B regarding the installation of the bike
Mr. Walker, have you reviewed the condition 3B regarding the installation of the bike trail? I mean, basically, it says, and the way it reads now, you could...
Yes. I don't think that was, I mean, I have, I know that was a correction, because I think the way I took it is probably your attorney didn't like the way it was written prior and corrected this.
I don't know.
That's how I interpreted it. I read a lot of these, and that's how I took it.
Always blame the attorney.
I mean, yes, it could, we could start it in three weeks, no, two weeks from now. I think the intent of it was some type of delay. Let's give the folks to the east of us, the, what's the name of the project? Eastview?
Eastview.
Give them some opportunity, time, but also allow us opportunity to get started on our building program. And that's where that number came from. So I think there was, the intent was some delay to see if they were going to go forward before we built it and had it torn out. But again, if it's the pleasure, we'll build it.
So maybe for clarification, we believe that the subdivision agreement, as worded, provides the option to the developer. If council's firm conviction is, we don't want to provide that extra time, we want to see it paved for the benefit of those existing homes that are already there, then we could certainly revise that and bring it back with the concurrence of the developer and modify that. Or you could direct an amendment and we can effect that change, and I'll defer to the attorney on...
I think Steve's correct. I mean, I agree.
I'd like to see it paved. I'd like to, I think the existing, I think the existing homeowners and the future homeowners of 70 homes, I don't think we should be holding it up for Eastview and, because if Eastview hasn't come forward with a permanent, with a concrete date that says we're going to do it at this date, we've sat, we've gone through this before of having projects sit there and sit there and sit there and nothing happened because...
Could be a couple more years or more.
Yeah. And if Elliott Holmes is willing to go forward and pave it, I think that's what...
They were willing to pave it back in June.
I'd say pave it, but I don't know what the rest of the council thinks.
Need a motion on that, current?
I think it would be helpful to have a motion as to the specific amendment to make to the subdivision agreement with that section 3B as far as the timing. It may be something we'll need to work out with the developer, but it would just be a clarification that it won't be tied to that, the 41st permit, that it will be before that date. As Steve, as Mr. Winkler said, it does already allow that flexibility. It just says they have to start the paving for the bike path before the 41st building permit. So they do have that flexibility in there, and then they have the timelines in the subdivision improvement agreement to already complete those. It just gave them some flexibility to determine whether they wanted to wait to the spring if Eastview was moving.
If you want to leave it, I will, I will give you my word that we're going to go forward and build it.
Yeah, maybe just again, technical clarification. The current, the tentative map conditions of approval required that it be completed prior to the first permit. And then through the subdivision agreement, we look to create some flexibility, given those delays. So a very simple, if everybody's will was, would be just a motion, strike 3B, and that reverts to the original condition. And they sound like they're ready to do that.
Yeah, I think the timing works. Yeah, we're going to, we got to, yeah, I think it does. We're going to pay, we can't pull a permit until we pave the streets, and they're going to happen at the same time, so it should be fine.
Well, I know there's people waiting for those homes to be built.
I mean, my only, I guess my only, it shouldn't be any hesitance. I said my only hesitance was going to be, what if just some, you know, we got the streets paved and it started pouring or something, but I don't...
I'm comfortable with leaving B in, you know, with your assurance and, you know...
You all know how to find...
Well, I mean, if you chose, if the developer, if the other developer came forward and said, yes, we really do want to work with you, we want to do this, we want to get it done and have some timelines, then I guess it gives you the flexibility to be able to do that. I mean, I just don't want you waiting till the 41st building permits pulled and we never hear from the developer that he, that they wanted to do it. So we've delayed...
I can assure you, we won't.
That's my concern, is I just don't want to see it delayed for nothing. I mean, if it really was that they were going to come forward and do it this spring, nobody wants to pave something and pull it out six months later and the extra costs that it would incur upon Eastview to do that.
Yeah, the, most people don't like doing development services because there's that, always that uncertainty. It's like, you know, as mentioned, the project proponent for Eastview, you know, at the approval, you know, back in 2015, oh yeah, we'll be turning dirt in a year, you know, and then it's, so...
No, because it really does connect in with the walkways and connects in with the bicycle trail and the bridge. I mean, it's important that it be done. And riding, you can't really ride bikes, push strollers and all those things on gravel.
It's better than hogged out dirt with standing water, so that's why we made at least rock that segment. So, yeah, it's, you know, Elliott Holmes is willing, you know, to do it, you know, to get, you know, building permits as necessary. And so, it was just an attempt to try to herd cats, so to speak, to a reasonable solution, but, you know.
Well, thank you. Okay, do I have any more discussion? Further questions? Do I have a motion?
Move for approval of the final map for the River Oaks 3C and authorizing filing and recordation thereof, as well as authorizing the city manager to execute the subdivision agreement with Elliott Holmes filing and recordation thereof.
I'll second.
Do I have a second? I'll second.
I'll second.
I'm done already.
Before we vote, was there any public comment? I didn't open public comment. I apologize. Okay, no public comment. Call for the vote. Ms. Mary Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Huer? Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Regular calendar, oh, pass that. Communication. Any communication?
I do not have any.
City clerks report?
Nothing tonight.
Comments by staff. Chris?
My two regular standing items have been the HCP and the annexation, so I think I'm down to one. Just a reminder, the annexation, I think it's going to be heard by the LAFCO board in December, so that's the first Wednesday in December. So we're looking to get on their agenda.
Steve?
I was just looking for the numbers here. We have the September Water Conservation Report, and it appears that we were, for the month of September, achieving 21% over the previous two-year average from two years prior. So keep up the good work.
Thank you. Armando?
Just like to remind everybody that we're currently taking basketball registrations for our youth program. We'll be taking registrations till Monday, the 22nd with a late fee, and then tryouts will be next week.
Just want to remind everyone and invite the public that this Saturday at the Littleton Center from 5:00 to 10:00 is the Thin Blue, or the Blue Angels of Hope Blue Line BBQ. We'll have our honor guard there posting the colors, and I'm actually speaking at the event. It's absolutely amazing event. It's her first fundraiser, that's Kristin Millard, to help raise funds, which she is the Thin Blue Line Flag Lady. I mean, there's no else way to say it. Whenever there's an officer that's injured severely or killed in the line of duty with her own money, he'd been sending flags all across the United States to the fallen officers in the departments. And so now it's time for us to start raising some money to help continue that effort. So it's going to be a great event.
Nothing to report. Thank you.
I have nothing further. Thank you.
Nothing.
Paige? Tom?
Christmas present for my daughter.
Yeah, that's a cheap grandfather.
I admit it.
Mark?
Three items. You're not off the hook yet. You have two items. You forgot about the cap.
I stand corrected. So let me give you an update on the Climate Action Plan and actually the Corleone Boulevard Master Plan. So the Corleone Boulevard Master Plan, we're actually looking at alternatives, and we're going to start scheduling some public meetings on that. We're looking at trying to start them the end of this month, beginning of next month. Climate Action Plan, we're looking at actual plan, parts of the plan and actually measures to support the plan, but we're a little bit behind schedule, and I think we're going to start rolling that out to the public probably in about a month or so. And then the Master Plan for the market area, we're behind schedule on it, too. We still need to get out with the design consultant and get that started. And I'm hoping we can get that done real soon, but I don't have a date on that. But thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Chris.
I appreciate the additional item. I do need that. I'll put it in my group.
You don't want just people unloved. One came up.
Add one.
As far as the Angel Hope Dinner, I've been in contact with a lot of retired police officers who are still interested in tickets, so you're going to have a full house. And what I would like to do at the next council meeting, I'd like to bring back my discretionary funds to continue the funding for the military bannock program, please. And that's all I have.
I would just like to wish all of our directors happy bosses day. We couldn't do without you guys. So I know the chief was publicly recognized on Facebook, but all of the rest of you, thank you for what you do. So meeting adjourned.